Meeting to order. Stand for the pledge. And Martha, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer tonight, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for this time that you've allowed us to come together as a city. God, we ask that you will place your hand upon us, guide us into the right direction, and give us insight, Lord, and may your will be done. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
You, would you do roll call, please?
Councilor Foster?
Here.
Councilor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Uh, Councilor Lorenz will be absent this evening, but a quorum is declared.
Alright, thank you, Nita. Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir. I'm sorry? Oh, Maria will not be available this evening on from F two.
I would move to make the modifications to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to remove F two off. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing F two.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, review and approval of accounts payable.
I would move to approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda from the minutes of regular meeting from February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Proclamations, communications, and appointments. So just in charge of that one. Madison. Mika?
Alright, um, so tonight, um, the city of Montavista and Kids Connection would like to recognize Madison Miller for her one year of service to the city of Montavista as a youth program leader for Kids Connection in our after-school and summer.
Are we gonna get pictures in this? Hang on, please.
Just replay, that's all.
Absolutely, you, as there is a youth leader or is one of you?
A leader?
Actually a leader. She does a really great job. And she stuck with us for a year. If we haven't chased them off for a year, then we're doing good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Everything you do with the kids, it's important. Thanks.
You're up, girl.
Alright.
Okay, I'm very, very proud to announce I've got two, two of my team members that have, they're celebrating ten years of service. The first one is Robert Vance. Robert is our Director of Public Works and I must say, we've got the finest public works department in the San Luis Valley. I'm really proud of Robert and his team and, and really glad to be working with him, so. And my second tenure is someone I'm equally proud to be working with, and that's Anika Velazquez. Anika has been running Kids Connection and just has provided a wonderful safe haven for children of all ages here in Montavista. And you just run a terrific program. I'm really proud of you.
So, uh, I have the next one. I'd like to first acknowledge Mario Duran for one year of service with the city of Montavista. He's come to Public Works and has been a true joy and asset to it, and we really appreciate having him on board. We'll try to get him to council at the next meeting and see if he had a conflict tonight. Um, tonight, I also have their street supervisor up 'cause we're gonna celebrate somebody that's got a great deal of tenure with the city of Montavista. Um, in today's society, it's really rare to see somebody at ten years or twelve years. Um, this individual has twenty years of service with the city. Distinguished service. Um, you know, sometimes people come and they just kinda do their time and continue to go. This guy continues to strive and do the very best. First to volunteer for any projects that need to be done, and I'm really proud of him. I'm gonna let his street supervisor talk a little bit about him and then we'll announce him.
This guy is, uh, very dependable. He will come and assist in any possible way that he can. You need snow removal, he will be here. I have never been told, well, I cannot make it. I'm sorry. He will show up to help. He is a very good man. And I am very proud of him.
So am I. And with that, Jesus, Flores, would you please come up? One year.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's awesome, man.
That's fantastic.
Planning and zoning commission members?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, we had, we've got three openings on our planning and zoning commission. Um, we have four very good applicants and we have their applications in, in your packet. We can either, you guys can either vote for all of them, you know, tonight. Um, we can call them each in and you can visit with them individually or as a group. So, I'd be happy to read out the names of those that have applied. That is Damian Ariano, Jerry Apker, Lauren Howard, and Justin Pepper. All are, are active in our community and have done some really fine things and.
And there needs to be two appointed, correct? Three.
Three.
So we got the three applicants in three positions?
So there's four.
We've got four applicants and three positions. Jerry Apker has served prior on the planning and zoning. Damian Ariano has a, um, is in the insurance business and his wife works for the city. Lauren Howard is the CEO of San Luis Valley Rural Electric Cooperative. And Justin Pepper is the owner of his own business as well called Linco.
What do you guys want to do?
It's difficult, 'cause I'd like all four of them.
So we can vote tonight or we can decide to bring them in to, for discussion? What do you guys think, Larry?
I'm sorry, commish, um, Council, I can't hear you.
Well, I was just asking them if, you know, if we wanted to vote tonight or if we wanted to bring them in, so.
You could also, uh, vote and make one a...
At large?
At large, yeah, or alternate. Now, I, Nita has already reached out to the Department of Local Affairs and we will have, um, some training that I hope Council can also attend specifically around planning and zoning. And, um, so, everybody's ready to roll up their sleeves and.
So are we deciding whether we wanna vote tonight or if we wanna?
We can either, we make that decision to either vote or we can interview them and then make our decision after that.
I'm okay with whatever you wanna do.
Larry, you're being all quiet. What are your thoughts?
I don't have strong thoughts on that. I don't mind voting today. I don't mind, um, interviewing people and voting at a later date.
Do we have, uh, stuff on, like, that we need to fill this position, so? Are these positions, do we have stuff that we really need to have people in, or do we have time to call them in, have a work session?
Well, we, I think it, it's important to make the time. We do have things that need to be addressed, but they haven't met since before the first of the year. So we need to get the positions filled and, and get them moving.
And I, I would move that we interview them. If we have time, since we have time.
We do have a work session next week?
We do have a work session next week, on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
On Tuesday, we can see if they can help come in and. And do you wanna interview them all together or individually? Do they have like twenty minute, twenty minute slots and?
Yeah.
Do it individually and?
That's what I would think.
Okay.
We do not, it's Wednesday actually is our work session.
I'm sorry, work session is Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday be better, okay?
At five thirty.
It's five thirty, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The motion, do I have to?
Don't need to remove my motion.
Admit? No, 'cause you moved to interview them.
I moved to, yeah, to bring them into the work session.
Dude, so we got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor and a second to, uh, interview the candidates for the planning and zoning commission members and have them come in on Wednesday the, what's the?
The ninth?
Wednesday the ninth to interview. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to have planning and zoning applicants appear at five thirty on Wednesday the ninth for interviews.
It's a work session? That's, that's not gonna work.
What's, uh?
The, the work session is, is for the wastewater and we've got elementary engineering coming down from Denver.
Ooh, okay.
So, um, does Tuesday work for everybody, I guess?
There's the interviews? I'm good with that.
We have U R A.
We've got Urban Renewable Authority. It's, it's not, for the all of you that are here, we are not lacking in work. Well, how about Thursday?
Or could Council come an hour before the work session, four thirty?
That's sometimes difficult.
That's gonna be tough.
Nice thought, but.
Yeah, that's gonna be really tough for the guys that are working.
Can we do it the next week, the volume week, do like Tuesday of the following week before Council?
The fifteenth? The fifteenth is wide open.
The fifteenth's what?
It's wide open. There's nothing scheduled on the fifteenth.
So we will change the time for the interviews to Tuesday the fifteenth?
Okay.
At five thirty P M? Did you copy that, Larry?
Yeah, I got that. Thank you.
Do we have our citizen comments and scheduled appearances in the reverse tonight?
No, that's the way they're supposed to be now.
Okay. Okay, citizen comments. Uh, City Council, welcome. Juns, scheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. So if we have citizen comments, go ahead and stand up here at the podium, please, and then, uh, there's sign-up sheet there. Sign, put your name on there, please. State your name to.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Alright, um, good evening. My name is Brandy Barbosa Freida and I am community member, a parent, and also, um, a physical education teacher at our elementary school, Bill Metz Elementary. Um, I'm here this evening to just get some more information about the use of our new facility for our recreation programs. I'm so excited to have this new facility in our community. Um, being born and raised in Montavista, the old sky high gave me many precious memories from swimming every weekend, or so it seemed, to playing and coaching rec basketball, also to, uh, attending private celebrations. And my hope is that our rec program will continue and that our facilities will be used to sustain these awesome programs. Our students talk about these programs all the time and the extracurricular experiences that they get, and they're so beneficial for them. Um, my partner teacher and I have seen growth in our children from self-confidence to sportsmanship, teamwork, and also just the importance of our increased physical activity that is so much needed. So, um, I wa, just wanna make sure that we can work together and make sure that our programs are around for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Margaret, you're not getting off the hook.
You talked her into it.
Hello, Council. Hello, everybody. I just wanna say thank you to the ordinance officer. I haven't seen a stray dog wandering around for several weeks, so he's doing a good job and I appreciate that. 'Cause I, I would hate to see a dog get hit. I mean, that just breaks my heart. So he's doing a good job and, thank you. And your group always is excellent. I, I get to chat with them every once in a while and they're always out there, and they're always so friendly.
Yeah.
They, they're just a good group of people, so thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
Anybody else for citizen comment? Huh? You're good? Just making sure everybody has their chance.
Come on, Daniel.
Going once, going twice.
Alright, and we'll move on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included in a portion of scheduled appearances on the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon by Monday on, prior to the meeting. So the first one up is Faimon Wolf Design.
I'll put my name down. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Katie. I'm here again. It's that time of year. Um, so we are in the planning stages of this year's, uh, Montavista Third Friday Art Walk and are ready to present to the city these plans. Um, we're looking at keeping third Fridays starting in May going through September. Oh, by the way, this is Jennifer Grace.
Hi.
Kinda drug her along too. She's been helping with this. Um, downtown Montavista again. This year, we would like to block Adam Street, a portion of Adam Street off if possible, from s- south of the bank, so that we leave the bank drive-through open and down through the second block, so that way we can get the artists kinda, um, more in the parking spaces so that they can be seen. It, it was a little difficult on the sidewalk. We would like to make this bigger and get more community involved and more artists involved. Um, the time would be four to eight P M of the active art walk, so we would need to block out the street at about three so that we could have the artists, musicians, we try to set up. I did print a little thing out for each of you too, if, if that'll help. 'Cause I know I'm not so great at this public speaking, so thank you. I have more. With Nita, for Nita? I printed plenty. Um, and we're also, there was, um, we actually had a really good turnout for the planning meeting last month and we've got a lot of people helping this year. Um, we also have the Optimists supporting us with this, or backing, you know, giving us Yahoo. Adam was at the meeting. Um, so we have the ability and more people. We wanna get the entire downtown area involved. Talk to all the businesses on First as well as Adams and maybe get them to have a, I don't know, art walk special, stay open late, even maybe host an artist inside their shop, maybe some artwork in the shop or maybe outside with easement on, on Bridge Avenue, obviously, leaving room for the easement. But to get all businesses involved and make this a really great art walk and get our community out and involved and, um, good to put a face there. I plan on getting ahold of you at some point and seeing if Kids Connection would want to have something involved in this. And, um, I've been talking with a couple of art teachers. I'll be contacting Montavista High School as well as Delta and the art departments to see if we can get them involved as well. So I'm dabbling now. That's... Did I, did I cover it all? Okay, okay.
Well, will there be like, somebody there like, teaching art?
That is the hope. They, I mean, I know we've got some artists that'll be actually out painting. Joe Horbath will be out again doing his painting. We're encouraging artists to be working on their art while they're out there as well as, you know, selling it.
I guess this is where I would come in. Um, I'm a acrylic abstract artist. I actually work with a hairdryer, believe it or not. It's, it looks better than you think. Um, I could, if, uh, if I happen to have a space inside, which would be the only way I could work, uh, doing my particular style, I could do a class, if that's something that you guys would think would be.
Wonder, I wonder if there would be like, uh, one of the businesses downtown that would be willing to open up a space for you, maybe?
Um, I have, I have briefly spoken with Ramon.
Ramon.
I wanna make sure I say his name. Ramon, uh, at the Purple. Blue, Purple Moon.
Purple Moon.
There we go. Um, and he mentioned that possibly, uh, well, once we get more settled into figuring out, you know, definite and whatnot, that, that would be a place that I could probably do something with them.
Well, I might have let you too in his workshop.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause he's got, um, the woodworker.
That's true.
He's wanting to be involved in this too. He's got some space.
Okay.
But that, yeah, that's, and that's part of why we're gonna talk to Kids Connection too and see if there's something that they could bring in or some of the art, art students, art departments, music departments, and I know that, um, I know that within, in our gallery, we could definitely, besides having just hors d'oeuvres and stuff, we could put some table up in the back where even kids could come put something together. Medicine bag, something, pouch. Um, but that is the idea, is to, to have, uh, like, interactive art walk.
Did you say you already have talked to some of the art teachers at the schools or, or planning too?
I have talked to, yeah, I'm planning on some. I've talked at, not in Montavista yet.
Okay.
Um.
That's great.
I've talked to where, where's Gabe Moffett?
Yeah.
Moffett, I think. But either way, just trying to pull in our youth and get our youth involved in, in this art. I think it's really important for our youth to have creative outlets and see creativity happening. And I think of, give the community a sense of pride and, you know, me, I'm the first. I'm gonna jazz up art no matter what. I think art, art's the answer to a lot of stuff, so.
Seems to be a good push, good time right now in many communities around here.
Yeah, Alamosa is starting their art walks Friday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. She's, she's in it and we're gonna go to it and see.
So I'll have a better understanding of what it will be like as well and maybe have an idea of something that might be more involved or maybe a special thing that maybe wasn't over in Alamosa or?
Yeah.
Whatnot, but I hope to be involved in both of them every month.
Where is the art walk located in Alamosa?
It'll be downtown on Main Street. Um, yeah, they're like where they did the...
Where it's really congested?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, where, actually where they, that space, the new space between the sidewalk and parking, uh, that's where everybody, I believe, is gonna be setting up booths, so. Yeah. So we'll be safe, I guess.
Which is, and this is why we were asking to block out part of Adam Street, keeping in mind the bank needs, their drive-throughs left open, so leaving plenty of room for any bank customers so that our artists don't feel squished anywhere here in Monty.
Have you spoken with Rob about that?
Not yet.
Okay.
No, I didn't know which. I just figured first present to the city, once we got things down here and let the city know and you guys could help direct us which way we need to go next and if Rob is it, then.
Yeah, the other thing I would suggest, um, for Council is just to make sure that all the business, since this is gonna repeat every, every third Friday, just to have it, go ahead and have the businesses sign something that they understand that it's coming down. And then you might wanna look at, um, maybe just doing the one hundred block of Adams to make sure that you go, um, 'cause the one thing to keep in mind, people are gonna be traveling on Second Avenue a lot. So, um, like I said, I don't have a problem blocking both off. I just wanna make sure that we have businesses on a Friday that can, people can actually get to.
Get to them, okay.
Mr. Mayor? Katie, I've got a couple of questions as well. So you're wanting to start this in April?
May.
In May, May?
May through September.
Okay.
Here's a sheet. Do you?
Yeah, May twentieth would be the first one and the last one being September sixteenth.
Okay, 'cause there will be... I'm sure we can work around this and, and figure, figure this out, Katie. Okay, cause there will be, I mean, I'm sure we can work around this and figure, figure this out, Katie. Our employees don't work on Friday.
Oh, that's right.
And so it'll, so...
That's right.
Well, we, you're gonna have to look at juggling schedules or paying overtime. As far as getting the streets blocked off and then getting them back open. There's just some internal logistics that we're really gonna have to take a look at.
Okay.
And I do agree with Rob, you know, it's, at least if you're looking at wanting to close down the first. Let's just keep it to one block and see what the results are. Because besides that, Fridays are pretty busy night for the restaurants. And we'll be taking up a lot of their parking spaces.
Okay.
So where do we divert cars to be parking, that sort of thing?
We do have the, the pre-parking behind Rain Brewers at the facet parking lot. Along Second Street. And down, if we're not on the second block, there's a second, second block.
So...
And then along on, on First, there's, you know, by Rain Brewers, there's the parking along there.
There's also parking on Second too. If you, if you don't block off two blocks, there's parking on Second.
Yeah, and parking in there.
And the people being encouraged that way to walk will actually see the artwork.
Absolutely. Maybe they'll stop in some of those businesses that, instead of just jumping out of their car, running to eat, running back in their car and leaving. If they have to walk around in front of businesses, now they might actually stop in and look or purchase or, you know, I don't know.
So why don't you, we'll get in touch with you next week and we can set up a meeting.
Okay.
See if we can't kind of talk through some of this.
Okay, that is perfect.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion in LA Three Theater?
So you all have in your packet that we received a resignation letter from Chelsea Martinez, who was serving as the board chairman. And Council, I've just, I've got some real concerns. You know, we've got a little asset downtown and yet, we've got, we're trying to run it with volunteers. And I don't know that it's really working out as maybe it had with the gusto from the beginning. So I'd like to propose that we have a work session and kind of, got some kind of ideas rattling around in my head. And see what all, what direction you guys want to go in. The, the committee themselves has been working for two years on getting their five oh one C three. And they haven't completed that process yet. They are on our insurance plan, the building, we cover the insurance. They have, they've had some significant errors in emergency lighting and exit signs. And so, Rob got an estimate, it's gonna be thirty-eight hundred dollars. I proposed to them that they pay half and then the city would pay half. And so we can get that done and taken care of in time for the Mountain...
Film Festival?
Yeah, no, thank you. Mountain Film Festival, cause that's later in April. And...
Do we have an alternate location for the film festival if the theater doesn't work out? I'm hoping the theater, theater works out. But if it doesn't, do we have plan B?
No. Well...
They need the projector, I believe, isn't it?
They need the projector.
Film Festival.
Yeah.
Yeah, for those that haven't attended, that's really cool what they do.
Yeah, it is. It's...
It's really interesting.
And then it's packed. So I proposed a few other ideas for them on where they could maybe be seeking some grants. I have, there's a couple state programs that they may qualify, so taking a look at that. But it's, it's gonna, we need to dig in a little deeper and, and help them. We're gonna keep it, or if you want to sell it, or...
When did you propose a work session for this?
Well, we're just really taking up your schedules, aren't we? You know what, we could probably just tag it on to after the, the Planning Commission.
Interviews?
Interviews.
I think good enough.
Michael, Victor? Okay, so it'll be March the fifteenth. Now, for a note, the next one, the ribbon cutting and naming of the new trail that was put in by S L V Go. It's at the, the parking has been allocated. It's at the end of Chico Camino. And it's an eighth of a, of a quarter mile. And it's being used and people are finding out about it. So we'd like to get signage put up and have an actual ribbon cutting. As well as, you'll need to decide what the name of it is going to be. Jaime has some ideas as far as possibly incorporating a disc golf course. If we can get that, you know, the idea is though, that you're, you're doing your disc frisbees away from the path. So you don't hit anybody as they're walking by. So I, I think it's a real asset for this, you know, complements Chapman Park and...
This area?
This area. It'll be easy for people to get off the street, off the highway and go walk and...
Just a quick question, I guess. Sidewalks on this side of the city over here, cause there's like, no sidewalks. And, you know, like I work across the street over here and I see people walking, like, all the times. Is it the business property that is responsible for those sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, operating owners are responsible for that.
And does the same policy fall for business owners as it does for citizens? Does the city will do half and half, or is that different?
Can, right now, the program's designed to replace bad sidewalk. In the areas where there is no sidewalk, we haven't really addressed that yet. But yes, yes, if they have bad sidewalk that's not usable or just not safe to walk on.
Are there like, no sidewalk?
So what we're gonna do about putting the sidewalk there.
Cool.
You know what, I'm gonna throw a proposal for a name out there. Since I wanted to name it as well, because we have people in this community who've done a lot. And it's in their, kind of their neighborhood area. I think we should name it the Ray and Colette Scaff Nature Trail or Trail. Because of, and they've never asked to be, they've never been that way, to be recognized most of the time. And I think it, we need to just do it. That's my thought.
They've done a tremendous amount for the city.
For sure. Financially as well as gift, just the volunteer hours that them two have put in.
They have given a lot of financial resources to a lot of projects in this, in our community.
And that's something we can also discuss, right, for the work session, is that, so.
Do you want to discuss it at the work session or do you...
Or just do it.
We can just do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
If you like it.
Let's just do it.
Let's do it.
So, does that need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
I would make a motion to name the new trail off Chico Camino. How, how would we word it? The Ray and Colette Scaff Trail off Chico Camino?
I like the nature trail, fill me in there. That sounds nice.
Ray and Colette Scaff Nature Trail?
Second that.
So it's been moved and seconded, seconded. To name the trail off of Chico Camino, the Ray and Colette Scaff Nature Trail. Uh, is there any more discussion? Nina?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to name the new trail off of Chico Camino, the Ray and Colette Scaff Nature Trail.
So we're gonna have a... The ribbon cutting's gonna be March the thirty-first at eleven A M. And I haven't visited with Jaime yet, but I thought it'd be nice if we just did something really simple, like just hot dogs. Hot dogs and a bottle of water and cut the ribbon and...
Go for a walk.
Go for a walk. That's right, go for a walk. The thirty, thirty-first is a Thursday, so...
Will we be able to have a sign made prior to that?
We should try.
And see if we can get Ray and Colette to be there? Okay. Contract, contracts, agreements and leases. City Attorney. Are you doing this, Gigi? Are you talking about that?
I can't. We, we have... First of all, our, our city attorney is Mister Michael Trujillo. I think he's done a very good job and I've enjoyed working with him in my short tenure here. But it's always good to reevaluate and put things, take things into consideration. It gives him an opportunity to say, you know, you're, you're working too much and I want to up my contract. Or it gives you guys an opportunity to sit and listen and reevaluate and decide if that's the leadership you like to use.
This has nothing to do with good and bad, is it? Through the whole council was a discussion that was had to just put it back out there again. So, you've done a tremendous job. So, kind of like we had to, well, when you got appointed. When you were thrown out of the pen and into the fire. And, and I really appreciate that. So it has nothing to do with any of that. It was just determined that we would put it back out there and I would hope that you would reapply. Or tell us that you're tired of us.
Maybe you want to go play golf. I don't know.
Same with, the same with the municipal judge. We have that contract on there as well. And the same thing, just like, as Larry put it, due diligence. To the...
Citizen, right?
City, citizens of Montavista, just to run through it. And that will go...
So, so what we're proposing is that if you decided that that's what you all wanted to do. I've kind of sketched out a timeline. Nita would get that posted ASAP. We would ask that, that any, any proposals be turned back in by March the twenty-eighth. For interviews for the attorney, it would be a quick turnaround. And we'd look at possibly March the thirty-first for interviews. For the judge, and our current judge is Barbara Zollers. That would be on April the fourth. So that you all could then make a decision and make your announcement on April the seventh.
Did you hear all that, Larry?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, my schedule for April was like, totally hairy. But that, I could probably squeeze the fourth in.
So we need a motion? We're gonna do a R F P?
And that's for the city attorney and the municipal judge, right?
That is correct.
I'd like to make a motion to put out an R F P for a city attorney contract and a municipal judge contract.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to put an R F P out for the city attorney contract and the municipal judge contract. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to put out an R F P for the city attorney and the municipal judge.
Okay. Rob, this one's on you, big guy.
Actually, it kind of fits in line with exactly what you guys have been just talking about. Before you tonight is a contract for awarding the wastewater system improvements project to Element Engineering LLC. So, away, a while back, when you first got on the council in two thousand eight. We agreed that we would go through engineering R F Ps and R F Qs every three years. And guess what this year is, that year? So we have invested a lot of time, a lot of effort to get us moving forward in our wastewater project. And I don't want to see us lose what we've already gained. So tonight in front of you is an independent contractors agreement. To retain Element Engineering to do the design, the construction, any of the, the continued processes that we're gonna need to do as we move through the USDA that they've already been working on. To get them under contract. And then that leaves us the ability then to go out and do an R F Q and look at engineering services for all of the city as far as our stuff. So, there's actually two contracts in your packet. The one is the independent contractors agreement, and that's the one I need you guys to think about and decide whether or not you want to award it that way. The second one is mainly for your information. It will be once the USDA assigns our grant and loan, it's the certificate of funding. They're going to require us to sign that anyways. So this just gets them under retainer a little earlier, so we can start moving forward with our portion of the design. So, and I would be happy to open any questions. The costs and the scope of services are the same on both documents. And that is kind of, hopefully, hopefully, worst case scenario. Hopefully, we get a little bit better deal on that, as far as what our grant versus loan will be. So that's figuring a forty percent grant, sixty percent loan. So that's what those figures of the two million dollars for the design and bidding and all of that is. That's in that attached to the scope of services.
Anybody have any questions for Rob?
Hi, John. I read through the contract, believe it or not, a couple of times and actually understood a lot of it. About the second time.
Well, and the other one's the big one.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it seems, seems straightforward.
And it, it, all it does is puts us under contract with Element for this one specific project. We can then go out to RFQ, US Council can look at all the proposals. And we can discuss and weigh that in if we wanna look at a different engineering firm, the same engineering firm, two firms, uh, you know, the sky's the limit at this point. But we don't lose anything that we've worked on for the last five years, three of which, you know, specifically with Element on. We just don't lose that, that data and that, that knowledge and have to rebuild, so. So the only thing that in here, if you choose to make a motion, I would need you to, um, instruct the city manager to go ahead and sign the document.
I would make a motion to, uh, have us retain Element Engineering for our wastewater management. Our facility and to have the city manager sign any necessary documents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with, uh, with Element Engineering for the wastewater system improvement project and have the city manager sign. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to retain Element Engineering for the wastewater system, system improvements project.
Thank you, Counselor.
And allow city manager to sign.
Thank you, Rob. Anita? I received an approved financial report, but I didn't make sure I didn't miss you this time.
It's coming.
Just that, that's good.
I gotta be closer than this to see it anyway, so that's fine.
I'm sorry, what?
I said I have to be closer than this to see it anyway, so that's fine.
You can't see it? I'm sorry. Here, you want this? Um, I put in the packet the summary that I've created for the January financials. I apologize for, uh, being late with January, but it is what it is. Um, we finished the month of January, we finished eight percent of the fiscal year. Big section, huh? Um, the cash balance for the main checking account in the general fund is two million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand. Water fund is three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, sewer fund is two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Um, and all three funds, our expenditures were in excess of our revenue. General fund was sixteen thousand, water fund twenty-four, and sewer fund was thirty thousand. The total expenditures percent of the approved budgeted amounts was nine point one percent for the general fund. Water fund was seven point four and sewer was three point two. So you can see, um, the, uh. General fund was a little bit over and the other two were under. The comparative, um, of our accounts receivable for January from this year to last year. Shows that, um, the receivables was, um, higher in all three funds last year. When I investigate that, um, a lot of it is because of the differences in, um, the way I post. Transactions as compared to the way the previous financial director posted them. Um, for ins- um. Uh, for, for, um, example, in the general fund last year, the year-end entry for the twenty twenty franchise tax, uh, account receivable. They, um, accrue it in December and then you reverse it in the beginning and it was not reversed until February and August. Um, and then there was also a CARES grant receivable. The water and sewer funds, the year-end entries for the accrued water usage that was accrued in December. Was not reversed until February. So it is a little, um, miscon- you know. It's not straightforward. Um, the accounts payable, um, this year as opposed to last year, um, and the general fund is a lot less than last year. And that one was just basically because of operating expenses and the way things were. The total revenue this year, um, over last year in January, um, the revenue increased ninety-seven thousand. Over last year. And the majority of that is, um. Is basically from the sale of the Guslow Building. That got booked in January. Expenditures, um, all of the fund expenditures were higher in January than they were last year. Um, in part, some of that is because of the way the government tracks accounting as accrual as opposed to cash. So when you have an expense for like an annual fee for a software service or something. Um, you book, you recognize the whole amount instead of expensing it over the year, so, um. It will look like your expenses are a lot higher at that particular point. Um, and we had some software fees of thirty-three thousand, we had eleven thousand for equipment maintenance. Um, we also had eight thousand in capital outlay for Sky High Park. Um, we also had increased wage and benefit expenses. And there again, um, the wages that, um, I accrue in December for what is paid in January. I reverse those immediately in January. Um, the previous director expensed them in December. So January only showed, um, one expense for one pay period instead of two. So that, um, is kinda misconceiving also. Um, the budget comparison, looks like we're really good, huh? Um, but like I said in the very beginning, um, the general fund is over one percent. Um, the water fund is under one percent and the sewer fund is under five percent. So January is kind of a, a misleading month, you know? Um, the current ratio, we have three dollars and sixty-four cents in current assets for every one dollar of current liabilities. And we have seven point eight seven months of, um, operating expenses in the unassigned fund balance. So I fully ex- I, I really expect, um, you know, the, the financials will work themselves out. Um, as the, as you get more months to, um, make up for the big expenses of, um. You know, software expenses, annual expenses that are paid. Any questions?
It's just one and I can't, it's cause I can't remember. I know having seven point eight seven months is really good, but there. That's like more than what is required, right?
Well, you typically like to have at least six months, you know? So, and it went down and that's because we had more expenses than revenue. Um, the previous month, I think it was nine point something or in December, at the end of December. So it went down some, but it still is good.
Very good.
And, and bear in mind, that's just accounting for, that's just the general fund. That's not taking into effect, um, the other water and sewer and that's just general.
Thank you, Anita.
Okay, I hope you will accrue then.
Need to approve that report.
I would move to approve the financial report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the financial report that Anita just gave. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the financial report.
Thanks, Anita.
Thank you.
Staff proposals, reports, and actions. Krista? The IT department.
This can be hard to follow.
Yeah, he knows that we're gonna light switch.
Good evening, everyone. I know electrical is not necessarily our forte, but I figured out the switch. So I don't have a whole lot to report tonight, but, uh, a couple notable things. We have completely redone our entire wireless network here. It's fully up to date. Not gonna lie, that hasn't been touched in a long time. Like that's been running since before I got here and hasn't really been updated. I finally just rebuilt the entire thing with DOS over the past month and so far, I mean, it's not noticeable that it's doing better, but it is doing much better and it's a lot more secure. On top of that, we have the, have a new firewall that is the main gateway for traffic in and out of the city. It is completely managed, up to date, and it is quite capable in what it's able to block and what it's able to allow to come through the city network. This was in, in the report either way, but it became even more notable with recent events and cybersecurity becoming very important as of recent. Other than that, we've got all our desktops that are brand new for this year pushed out and we've just been chugging along. We have a single person here for a week at a time and we cycle through, so I know, uh. Big Brandon, who hasn't been here a lot, has been here at least once every single month for the past couple of months now and it's, or one week out of the month. And we just keep cycling through. So not only are we here more often, we're also in variety, not just me. Which may be a good or a bad thing depending on who we're talking about or talking with. Other than that, I mean, I have a bunch of little things I could report on, but I'm sure you guys would not wanna hear all that. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
So what are all the little things that you're doing?
I'm just kidding. I was gonna say, there's a list, but, uh, it'd be off the top of my head and I'm not very good at articulating words, so you're gonna have to bear with me.
You're good.
But.
DOS taught me how to cast without using a fishing pole.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, don't get me wrong, fishing is one of my favorite things on this planet, but, uh, casting means multiple things anymore. On top of that, he also got a second monitor and I know that's been interesting. Other than that, any questions?
I do not have any.
All right. Well, next report maybe a little bit longer is I'm gonna have DOS come up with me and help me give that report, get him used to coming up in front of you guys, see if he does any better. All right, thank you guys.
Appreciate you guys, man.
Always appreciate all you guys to.
Yeah, but weren't for that, if it wasn't for us tearing stuff up, you guys would have nothing to do. Gives us something to do. Kids Connection.
Ten-year report.
I don't have much to report on, um, business as usual at Kids Connection. Um, the only major change has been with Rio Grande County's, uh, change in mask pro- or quarantine protocols for the school districts. Um, school districts are now only required to quarantine the one person that is positive. Um, everybody else is able to maintain staying in school. So our numbers, that started last Monday. And our numbers are starting to pick up cause we don't have multiple children being quarantined, um, for exposure, so. We've seen that just keeping us on our toes a little bit and just paying a lot more attention to kids' behaviors to make sure we don't. Miss one and then end up having to lose out on the staff or somebody getting sick, so. Um, other than that, I don't have much going on. It's really just been. Every challenge a kid can throw at you the last couple of weeks, so it's been. It's been fun and it's been exhausting, but we're looking forward to the calm after the storm, cause it's been, it's been pretty exciting over there. Um. Yeah. Oh, uh, Crane Fest breakfast on Saturday, the twelfth, Kids Connection is hosting the breakfast. We'll be serving. Uh, biscuits and gravy with eggs and sausage, coffee and orange juice. Come down and enjoy some breakfast with us.
Where's this gonna be, at the Kids Connection?
No, at Sky High.
Sky High?
Yeah, on Saturday morning during Crane Fest from seven to ten. So come down and have some breakfast with us. Um, the charge is seven, seven dollars for adults, five dollars for children. I'll send out a flyer to everybody Monday morning so that you have it and can share amongst your friends. Just don't overwhelm us, cause we haven't done this in a while. We've planned for a good amount of people, but I don't, I'm hoping we can keep up with it. I'm sure we'll be good. We'll just wing it. I'm just gonna tell them, we're only really good at taking care of children. We're not that great at serving adults, so. They'll be patient with us. So if you don't have any questions for me, that's all I got.
I do not. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, Jaime.
How you doing?
Good.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, real quick, I think the last time I came before you was, uh, the begin- or in January, I think. And, uh, if I remember right, I was reporting. Uh, that we were finishing with girls' basketball and we started with boys' basketball season. Uh, well, since that, that time, since then, um. It was a little crazy season. Uh, never experienced something like that. As you remember, we were short-staffed and it was me by myself. And it was a lot of, um, I think we could see a lot of COVID stuff still happening. Um, we had to cancel so many games and then find the time to reschedule. At the same time, working with the schools because they were in the same process. Uh, with scheduling games and then rescheduling and, uh, the use of the facilities. I mean, it was, it was, uh, it was bad. But we survived, we went through. Um. We ha- uh, there was times where our parents would show up to, to the gym to practice and there was games happening when they supposed to be, cause they had to reschedule. And there was times that we show up to play and the other team didn't show up because they had to cancel last minute. And so it was, uh, a lot of frustration from the parents. I am surprised that we haven't had a lot of complaints. I thought you guys were here and now we're coming to the, here and hearing all these complaints. And, uh, when I saw the lady, Ms. Rosa's, uh, coming up, I thought, oh, man. But, uh, I'm glad that she was here. I mean, like I always say, you know, we always, I wanna take the, the path, the good and the ugly. Uh, that's the only way that we're gonna know what we're doing and how we're doing it and improve from there, so. Uh, I always welcome anybody to come in and that was good that somebody, not very many people for recreation comes and give good, give, uh, things. So. Um. Um, like I mentioned, you know, during the season, it was, uh, it was tough, but we went through. Uh, I tried my best, uh, to do wh- what I could with, uh, managing of. Three different, well. Six different teams, at six different levels, no. Yeah, six different teams, at three different levels, at two different gyms, uh, by myself. But, uh, it got through. Uh, I, it was a lot of communication and mis- miscommunication with parents. Um, a- as far as the scheduling and, and, and games and all that, but I always try to stay in contact with the parents and the coaches and learn them why. We would have to cancel and when we had to reschedule and all that. Uh, as all that was happening, I had to take a couple of, several days off for some personal family matters that came, uh, that happened, my family. And, um. So, you know, i- it was difficult, uh, and I wanna thank Kim, uh, uh, El Pando, because she stepped up. To help me, uh, during that week or a week and a half. She came and she covered those games while I was gone. And I can't be more grateful for that, um, for her to, to do that during that time. Uh, after I returned to work from the, from the week off. It was towards the end of the. it was towards the end of the basketball season, and I came into the week just before the weekend of the tournament, and it was kinda like get back into the working mode because we were, we were scheduled to host the tournaments here in Montevista. So I had to get in contact with all the directors, all the coaches, to make sure we get all the, the numbers of wins and losses so we can set up, sit the, the teams in the right seating for the brackets. And at the same time, luckily, that's when we hire, we got the new hire on board, Jake Lemmy. I'll have him come up, so you can introduce himself. He started the Thursday, February 10th, and our tournaments were the Saturday, the 12th. And so when he came in, come on Jake, when he came in, he was kinda like, I told him, okay, this is what we do, and this is what you're gonna do, and kinda threw him in the fire there, and he reacted pretty good to it. He helped me a lot during that, along with Kim and the other people that we had there that day. And so I'll just let him introduce himself real quick, so you guys can, I know that we sent an email introduction, but it's always good to put a name to the face, so I haven't come up yet.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, like Jaime said, just started in the end of January, got thrown in the fire a bit. I'm new to San Luis Valley in general. I just bought a house in September, so new to the area, but just tried to get involved in the community. My kind of further background is, you know, I grew up where sports was a huge part of my life. Taught me a lot of lessons and played football on track and field all the way through college, and then coached collegiately for a couple of years, track and field, and then spent a random six years working with wildlife research, outdoor recreation, and outdoor education, and working dogs, so kind of a fun mashup there. And then recently moved here and was excited to kind of bring my passion for sports, bring my kind of love of the outdoors and kind of knowledge of environmental education and outdoor recreation to the community. Yeah, if you have any questions for me, just let me know, or someone behind me, let me know.
Thanks, Jake. I'm glad to have him aboard. I believe that with experience that he has, he'll bring, you know, he's gonna bring new ideas, and we're gonna be able to come out with new programs for our department and reach out to those people that we haven't yet. So I'm really excited to, I know he has come up with a couple of ideas, and we're kinda working towards those. Well, ever since we finished with the youth basketball, the main focus for us now is kinda like a slow, kinda between seasons. We've been collecting uniforms for, for basketball, which we almost, I think we're almost there. We almost got them all. We also opened registrations for adult basketball season, and we will, we will be starting that in the 14th, May, Monday, the 14th. Those will be hosted at the middle school gym, which also almost didn't have the opportunity to host that. But I think Gigi might work the magic there, and we will host that, be able to have the gym. So it'll be from March 14th through, all the way through almost May 20th, when we'll be having games there, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays, from 6 to 9, yeah. And this is open again for any kids 15 and up. Of course, anybody under 15 needs to have the signature of a parent in order for them to participate. We also have, starting about the same time, we're starting with the youth soccer season. That will start April 9th with the first round games. We have registrations open right now, and that goes from pre-K all the way through seventh grade. Also, Jake and I been working and getting some, looking for some grants. There's a couple of grants that we're interested in looking for and applying for. One is trying to pull the dog park again. The other one is the multipurpose outdoor, multipurpose outdoor court and tennis court. We're looking more like the tile kind of surface, something that can be replaced. If something breaks, it won't cost to, to replace one tile or two, if that's the case. And it could be used in multiple seasons. So that's a couple of things that we're looking at. So yeah, just kinda, kinda showing the roads of what needs to be done, and, and one thing I learned is the same thing every, every month. We do, this is like a cycle, just different sport every cycle. And I think that's something that I've been saying here along, all this time. So I think that's all I have around. Oh, yeah, my computer, I came on Monday, and my computer was done. I thought I did something wrong, so I had to call IT and like, hey, what's going on with this? It says that it's not, it can't find the hard drive or hard, hard drive, and first thing I don't know, oh, that's not good. So he came and they replaced the computer, and we're up and running again. So it's good to have these guys handy here all day because, yeah, we break things, and it's good for them to fix them. So I think that's all I have in my report. Like I always, you know, I always welcome any comments, bad, good, or ugly, just so we know what we're doing. And because we always think we're doing something right, but when somebody else decides we're missing something, and that's always good to know. If you have any questions, concerns?
Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
And welcome.
Welcome to Montevista. City manager.
March was already in like a lion. There's just a lot going on and a lot of, a lot of things. I think I filled you all in that Montevista is a finalist for the Recreation Rural Economy Grant. It, there were 115 applicants across the country, and we were one of 20 to make the semifinalist position anyway. So this doesn't come with any direct funding. What it is, is that it'll be a lot of community meetings and kinda creates the master plan of what we want to create with a recreation economy that helps drive other businesses to fill in downtown. So, okay, yep, we've got more bike trails, so now we need a bike shop. Now, if you've got your bike shop, you need to eat ice cream or, you know, whatever. So Glenwood Springs and Clovis, no, Glenwood Springs and Grants, New Mexico, would be the closest to us as far as, as we looked at the map. But Rob and Jaime participated in that, as well as Debbie Garcia, Bob Richards, and... Mick Daniels, who's SLV Go, and then also Patrick Ortiz with SLV Go. So it was actually Mick who applied for this. He thought Montevista is, it was the right community to, to get in on this particular grant process. So we're kind of excited to see that happen. Tom Monaco, who's with the Upper Rio Grande Economic Development, you all met him a meeting or two ago, he's resigning. And it's a big surprise that he got a job offer back in Florida where he's from that he said, I absolutely could not give up. So... He's giving everybody a month, so we're kinda scrambling to kinda get that going. And if any of you guys are interested, and this goes for my staff as well, the next meeting for the Upper Rio Grande Economic Development is on Tuesday at 7:00 AM. And this month, it is gonna be at Sky High, and so they will be bringing in breakfast, and breakfast is 12 bucks a head. And we're really trying to get more people back involved. They had, we'd have 30 people attend their meetings before COVID, and now it's just a small trickle. So whatever we can do to help support them would be great. I've got, I've been doing performance reviews with my staff, and so got more of those coming up this next week. And probably the biggie was just the very nice ribbon cutting we had at Sky High. Victor, we missed you.
I know. I'm like, oh.
There's so many busy things going on. But kinda standing up there on head, on stage, I was trying to count heads, and I think we were really close to 250 people. So lots of positive comments, and, and... People are calling Stephanie every day right now. They're sho, they're showing it, they're, they're walking people through. They're, it's kinda funny because some of them, some of the comments have been that the banquet room with the, with the dance floor is too small. So they're paying full price for the whole event center, and you know how big that is. So, I mean, she said she had a, a party of 150, which the banquet room would be perfect for. They're booking the whole event site, so... It's...
Sounds good.
It's great.
You'd be interested in how big those dances get.
I know, right? What's her last name?
What are you kinda doing in your sermon?
Well, and I think I told you all, we've, we've cut, we've cut off taking any sort of reservations between now and June the 1st, so that will allow Alcon enough time to go ahead and get all their, the little checklist things done, and then, and get their, their equipment stuff off the property. So Stephanie is very optimistic, and her goal on her review, she said she, she wants to have 50 events by the end of the year, which I think would just be phenomenal, so...
That's awesome.
And then at some point, we do, we're gonna have to do a work session and, and discuss the whole recreational, you know, are we gonna be more in the recreation business or are we in the event business? And how do we, we balance this for the community so that everybody feels like they've got usage and access for the building? You know, the, I don't know, I'm sure there was a lot of thought put into basketball floors, but it's a minimum of 10 to 12 people, four to five hours for just one of the courts. And so it's, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a juggle as far as getting them set up and taking them down in a regular, timely fashion. And if that's what you guys wanna do, we've gotta think about just the people, resources, and how we get this done. I love the idea of we'll use volunteers, but I'll bet that gets old after about the sixth time. And then, and then I'm looking at Rob and saying, I don't care if there's a snowstorm, we've gotta set up the basketball courts. So it's, it's really, the court that was picked out is very heavy labor-wise. And so we've just gotta make some decisions and get things worked out.
Definitely need to have a work session on that because, I mean, I question if there's any type of equipment that we could get to make it easier, more, no?
No, no.
Think outside the box, man. Come on, think outside the box.
We got, well, the slabs themselves are, most of them, there's a few that are four feet, but the slabs are eight foot, and they weigh 180 pounds.
So how do they move them?
Lift it up and you put it down.
Where you guys set it down, that takes a tool to lock it in and a pin, and then you move on to the next one, and you just...
And it's all put, they're all numbered, so they all go together as a puzzle. And of course, the court has their stripes and everything are, are already on it. And so you're gonna know if you've got one out of black.
Yeah, we definitely need to find a work session a little bit later.
Yeah. So I feel Jaime's pain, but we've gotta figure out what the...
Well, you wanna just tack that on to the Tuesday, March the 15th?
No.
Have breakfast sent in on Wednesday, March the 16th?
Well, and with Alcon in it, in there right now, we can wait until like the first part of April, so we can get all these other little meetings out of the way and then have a really good end-up discussion.
Sounds good.
Yeah. These are good, good opportunities and good growing pains.
Is that all you have, Gigi?
Yes.
Council committee, city commission, and council reports. Larry seems how you're present, but not. We'll start with you.
Well, I guess you guys finally figured out how to keep me quiet in the meeting. Either way, when I was at the ribbon cutting, I was struck by the fact that we were standing in a building that three years prior was nothing more than a cardboard model being pedaled by Carla. And there were, there was a dream. There was an idea that was put out in front of the group, that was put out in front of the community, and the community came together and made it a reality. And that was very inspiring to me. So my next question is, is, dream big, Monty. What's your next dream? That's all I've got to say.
Larry, what, would you also fill them in on the picnic tables?
Oh, okay, sure. Rotary has, through a district grant, through, District Rotary has purchased four picnic tables to put in at the Sky High facility, and we just got the picnic tables in. We're gonna put a little, basically a car wrap over the top of them. Talks about some of the things that International does, and we're in the process of finishing the design work on those, and then we will get those printed. So those will be out in probably about two weeks or so.
Soon.
And then Larry, I was a little unclear. Are these to replace the picnic tables on the west side? Or are these the new picnic tables that will go in the new pavilion on the east side? Or the west side and the old ones on the east side?
Right. I'm not sure particularly matters. The original thought on it was to put picnic tables on the east side underneath the shelter that's up there. But I'm not gonna, we're not gonna be terribly picky about it. So if they wanna use it on the west side, I think that would be fine, too.
Very good. Thank you, Larry. Martha?
Well, I, I know that everyone has already mentioned the fantastic ribbon cutting at Sky High, and I just wanna throw my two cents in there. It was phenomenal. Sunflower did a great job with the food that they brought and, and serving everybody, and everything just seemed to flow really, really easily and, and very well organized. So we had a great ribbon cutting. I wanna encourage, especially after we, we saw our financial report tonight, which is good. I mean, there's nothing wrong with it. But I really encourage you to shop local. I wanted to encourage everybody that. If it just isn't available in Montevista and you just have to order it, please order. I don't care if it's from Walmart. I mean, unless you're putting out a fire or saving somebody from a heart attack, you don't have an emergency. You wait a minute while it's delivered to help out your city. Have it delivered to your house. Have it delivered, or let's say you wanna order something from Big R or True Value. Did you know that if you order online and have it sent to their store, not only have you helped the city's sales tax, but that store, those store owners get paid for that? So that's business to their business. How many of us are more than 10 minutes from making one of those places? So, you know, have, have it delivered there. Have it delivered to a friend's house that lives in Montevista if you're outside the, the... Um, have it delivered to a friend's house that lives in Montevista if you're outside the, the city limits. What, whatever. Get those tax dollars here. I just really wanna encourage our local citizens. You know, if you work in Montevista, have it delivered to your work. We need the tax dollars. We need the revenue. We're not in any danger. We're not in a bad place, but we don't wanna get there. So let's make hay while the sun shines, while we can do that. I would like for staff to look into the cost of a generator that we could use at some of these events. Uh, last year when we did single to mile scared me to death because we blacked down Adam Street. Thankfully, Rob and, uh, and you were really, I can't remember the electric company that you called, but I think you are, you don't, I think you knew we were gonna do it and it was already a done deal. But it panicked me a bit. And, uh, so maybe, I'd like to see what the cost would be again. We're okay with money. I know we can't be frivolous with it. So let's get some more tax dollars coming in. So if this is too expensive of a project, maybe by next year it won't be. Maybe we'll be able to afford it at that point. Most of the food trucks, most of the, the bouncy houses, uh, most of them do have a generator of some sort. Some of them, however, are extremely loud. When you've got a generator that is as loud as your DJ, we have a problem. And so, uh, you know, if we could do that, because the food trucks also, if they, if they can plug in, if the bouncy houses can plug in, they don't have to use their generators. So I'm, I, I'd like to just keep the noise down if we could and make our events even more welcoming. And I think with, uh, what the Optimistics is doing, what, um, the art community is doing, I just, I think that we're in for a lot more events coming up. I'm seeing community members stepping up and saying, just like tonight, um, Fame and Wolf Designs, they, they're not part of an organization. They're not, you know, part of any sort of agency. They are community members, business members that wanna see this town thrive. Instead of sitting there, you know, saying, oh my gosh, we don't have any business or everybody's going to Alamosa or whatever. They came up with a way to bring some people to Adam Street. I would like to, the city to be able to encourage that. We also have, uh, in a meeting that was, that was held between the city and the Optimistics just a few days ago, I didn't know this, but we don't really have a, any teeth in our codes or our laws or our ordinances, uh, about when we shut down Adam Street. And, and we need the cars off of there. We have told people, you'll be towed. Do our ordinances really say, do our, do our laws, do our statutes really say that we can do that? I'd like for city staff to look into that and maybe write something with some teeth in it that says, yeah, we can. Because it only takes one car sitting there in the midst of an event to, it's not gonna ruin it. It's gonna, but it's gonna mess it up because that person might decide they wanna leave. Do bad. Tough on heels.
Make sure it's in there that we can tow it with the ball cap. Just ride off the side.
Yeah, just, yeah, so make sure we can, um, you know, and just, just maybe look at the fact, I, I'd, I'd like for city staff to act, to look at the fact that we're having more events. And we want to encourage more events. We want to encourage more business. So what sort of things do we need to, I, I don't know that on my own, in my own head. I don't, I don't know that all by myself. But collectively, I think we can come up with things that, that, that does give rights or does give authority to the police department, to Public Works. To whatever department needs to have it, to Parks and Rec, you know. What can we do? What can we do? Let's lay that out so that, one, we have, like I said, some teeth here to actually help these people do these events. And two, people kinda know that people that are wanting to do events, agencies that are wanting to do events, kinda know what they're allowed to do too. But keep it flexible enough that we're welcoming events, not going, not so much, well, yeah, you can have your event here on this, 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 this condition. I know we have to have conditions. I know we have to have permits for something. I know there are some things that have to happen. But we can do it in such a way that we look hospitable and we come across as billable. So, okay, and I think that's it. I'd like for staff to do, though, just look into those two things and see what we can come up with.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Mr. Segawa?
I just wanna, uh, congratulate everybody today that had proclamation for their, uh, years of service to the city. I think it's great. Uh, without those people, the city wouldn't be the way it's, the way it is. So, uh, congratulations and thank you to all of those people that are grinding and making Montevista a better place. Um, also to the citizens, I just wanna say thank you for, uh, being who you are. You know, uh, you are what makes Montevista what it is. So, keep it up. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I'll do the ribbon cutting as well. That was absolutely amazing. It was great to see the number of people that were from all over the San Luis Valley, not just Montevista, Rio Grande. It was great. And, uh, let's start to warm up a little bit. Keep, keep, uh, vigilant about your neighbors and what's going on in the community because you're, we're starting to get people that are walking down the street, checking the car doors, make sure you keep your vehicles locked. And if you see something, say something. Cause they're, they're out and about. Thank you to the city for everything that everybody's done. Thank you, Gigi, for your three months of right out of the pan into the fire.
We've got lots of opportunities.
That's what we do. So, as I said, that ribbon cutting. Keep saying, build it and they'll come. So now we just gotta keep waiting for them to come. But it sounds like it's coming to play, so. With that, we will adjourn the meeting until March.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, sixteenth.
Oh, that's the record statement. I won't beat you.
She'll be at four.
Be at four.